You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Okay.
Dennis, excuse me, Town Clerk Lisa Arpin, just it's been a little while since we've zoomed, so just a few things for those connected by telephone, just a reminder that if you want to mute and mute yourself, you would toggle between star six, so star six to unmute and star six to mute. And then if you're on the phone and you want to speak and you want to raise your hand or lower your hand, you would toggle between star nine. Okay. And then just a reminder once again that if you're speaking, to please identify yourself by speaking your name each time that you are speaking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Town Clerk Arpin. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Special meeting of the RTM will be convened on Wednesday, November 1, 2023, at 8:00 p.m. remotely via Zoom technology, to consider and act upon the following matters. Item number one, roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the following representatives. If you can just remember to unmute yourself when you say here. Representative Alphon.
Guess he didn't get back yet.
Okay, so I will mark him absent and then let me know.
He's on the Zoom. He's just maybe muted.
We know. He was at the last meeting. He must have walked away.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Amore.
Here.
Anderson. Absent. Barron.
Here.
Black.
Representative Black here.
Bonnberger.
Here.
Brooks.
Present.
Conklin.
Representative Conklin is here.
Thank you. Erlanger.
Here.
Everson.
Representative Everson is present.
Thank you. Flanagan.
Representative Flanagan is here.
Greenberg. Representative Greenberg is here. Thank you. Representative Healy.
Representative Healy is here.
Henchel.
Here.
Hesse.
Here.
Thank you. Heinz. Absent. Ingraham.
Representative Ingraham's here.
Representative Leach is here. Mareska.
Here.
Nuppani. Absent. Free. Absent. Shre- Rickyo.
Representative Rickyo is here.
Thank you.
But if you don't need me, I'd like to go watch the World Series.
So should I mark you present? Are you staying? Thank you. Shrestha?
Representative Shrestha is present.
Thank you. Sires?
Representative Sire is here.
Stupanic? Absent. Sullivan? Absent. Turelli is absent. Toohill?
Yes, good evening. Representative Frank Toohill is present.
Thank you. Verderam? Representative Verderam is here. And Wells? Absent. Okay.
Representative Leach? Tricia Anderson is here. Representative Anderson is here.
I'm here. She has her hand. Thank you. And for ex officios, I know Clerk Arpin is here. And is that it?
Nope. I'm here. First Selectman Cosgrove.
Oh, thank you. I see you. Okay, so we have First Selectman Cosgrove and Clerk Arpin. Thank you. Okay, attendance is all set.
Representative Alphon is on. He's having a problem getting off of mute.
That's what I've been saying.
I'll tell him to chat again.
He's here. Okay, thank you.
Put it in the chat, Anthony. Thank you.
Okay, Representative Flanagan here, moving on to item two. To receive communications with respect to and to consider and act upon the following resolution entitled, "Resolution Authorizing an Appropriation of $1,100,000 for the Fleet Fielding Station Project and the Financing of Certain Appropriations by the Issuance of General Bond Obligations to the Town," and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $1,100,000. Therefore, the full context of the resolution is on file and open to the public for inspection in the office of the Town Clerk. Representative Healy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, at this point, I'd like to ask that we waive the reading of the full resolution. I think that also then has to come by a roll call vote. If I can get a motion on that. Well, I move, I move that we waive the reading of the full resolution.
Mr. Moderator, Representative Black, I'll second that motion to waive the full reading.
Representative Flanagan here, motion on the floor to waive the full reading of the resolution, and there's been a second. Representative Healy, I don't believe we need a roll call vote on that, just the show of hands on that, not a show of hands, but if anybody has any objections to that, please state it.
Representative Rickyo objects. I'd like a full reading.
Anyone else? Okay. So for clarification purposes, why don't we do a roll call on this? All those in favor waiving the full reading, signify by, we'll have a roll call vote on that. A yes is in favor and no against.
Okay, so this is to waive the full reading?
Correct.
Representative Alphon? I can't hear Representative Alphon.
Yeah, he's in, he can only communicate through chat, so Anthony, please.
Can he shake his head?
He can't, he can't either one.
Okay, I see his vote. It's there. Yes, okay. Amore?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes, I vote yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Black?
Representative Black votes yes.
Bonnberger?
Representative Bonnberger votes yes.
Brooks?
Representative Brooks votes yes.
Conklin?
Representative Conklin votes yes.
Erlanger?
Representative Erlanger votes yes.
Everson?
Votes yes.
Greenberg?
Greenberg, yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Henchel?
Henchel, yes.
Hesse?
Hesse, yes.
Ingraham?
Representative Ingraham, yes.
Leach votes yes. Mareska? Is Representative Mareska here still?
Yeah. Representative Mareska votes yes.
Thank you. Representative Rickyo?
No.
Shrestha?
Representative Shrestha votes yes.
Sires?
Representative Sires, yes.
Toohill?
Representative Toohill votes yes.
Verderam? Verderam votes yes. Thank you. So we have one no vote.
Okay, Representative Flanagan here, the motion passes to waive the complete reading of the resolution. Back to Representative Healy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. The Ways and Means Committee met, as most people know, about an hour ago to hear this presentation, both from our town engineer as well as information from Jim Finch, our finance director. Again, the $1.1 million that we're looking for does not have any grants affiliated to it, but this is going to be from digging up the old gas tanks that are at the police station and implementing new ones at the firehouse. This will be more locally convenient for everybody that has to use it, from DOT, police, fire, even our Board of Health. Apparently, they're in there for 30 years. Starting 2025, we're going to have to go through much more extensive surveillance if we keep them in and do not approve this funding tonight. The new ones will have all new cameras, security, so the right people are getting in to use the facility, and it will be dual tanks of gas and diesel. This went through committee and was passed five to zero unanimously, and I put its favorable passage here in the form of a motion tonight. Thank you.
Representative Flanagan here, the motion on the floor is to approve this resolution. Is there any discussion from members of the RTM?
Yeah, this is Representative Rickyo.
Go ahead, Representative Rickyo.
Yeah, my question is, why aren't we considering just taking this money out of our rainy day fund? We have millions of dollars in that account. I'm just curious what the, if there was any discussion to that, on that during the Ways and Means Committee meeting at 7:00? And I'd like to know what that discussion was, and you know, what was the reasoning for not taking the money out of the rainy day fund?
Yes, there was a lengthy discussion about that topic that was brought up by Representative Erlanger, and speaking with it, as we've all been involved in what's going on and still coming forth in the town over the next five to 10 years, we're going to have many other projects that we don't want to stick it to our taxpayers later, but suddenly have to jack up the rate because we suddenly drained our rainy day fund down to what may be by some acceptable levels, but not accounting for everything that we have going forth. As far as also, what type of funding would we also get for those other projects? That's why we're looking to bond this here today.
All of a sudden, Representative Healy, you're concerned about sticking it to the taxpayers, where you've been very loose with spending the taxpayers' money?
Representative Rickyo, I don't know if you've been drinking, but this is supposed to be about the resolution and not the personal attacks. I will ask you to be removed from the meeting if you keep it up.
I really resent that.
Keep it up.
Let's, Representative Flanagan here, let's, let's keep on with this meeting, guys, all right?
Well, wait a minute. I've got a representative insulting me, inferring that I've been drinking. I mean, how insulting is that? Well, that's typical for Representative Healy, because he likes to insult people. I'm asking a question. I mean, he said he doesn't want to stick it to the taxpayer. All of a sudden, you know, he hasn't cared about the taxpayer.
It's not all of a sudden. That's what my record has always stood for. You know, you were the only one being difficult and not reading the full resolution. That's who you are, Mark, and we're happy you're drawn.
Representative Healy, that's my right as an elected official.
All right, Representative Flanagan here. I think Representative Healy answered your question. Representative Rickyo, let's move on.
I demand an apology from Mr. Healy for inferring that I've been drinking. I demand an apology from Representative Healy, inferring that I was drinking. That is, that is, he should be ashamed of this. He should be ashamed of himself. He should be ashamed of himself for inferring something like that.
All right, Representative Flanagan.
I just got back from work.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not going to, not here to make him give you an apology, okay?
Why not, Mr. Flanagan? Why not, Representative Flanagan?
Between you and him and not, not for RTM.
No, it's not between him and me. It's a lack of respect.
Excuse me, excuse me. Could I ask a point of order here? I believe the rules of this body require that no personal attacks.
Right.
So I would like to, through you, Mr. Moderator, Jim Finch, the finance director, is on this meeting. He could certainly fill in Representative Rickyo with an answer to his question detailing the various projects that were discussed by Mr. Finch during Ways and Means and also before the Board of Finance. So if I could ask that that take place, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Representative Flanagan, I have no problem with that. Finance Director Jim Finch, can you answer that question for Representative Rickyo?
Yes, Jim Finch, Finance Director. I think it's important to underscore a couple things here. One is, what's before you does two things. It's a, gives the authority to spend money, and this involves both items on the RTM, and it gives us the authority to borrow. Implied in that is also the option to borrow money. So ultimately, when the town funds these projects, not everything that's authorized for bonding does get bonded. I won't go into the lengthy discussion we had at the committee. I did remind folks that, you know, the Indian Neck Firehouse would be an example of a project that had a bond authorization, and we actually did fund it in a non-bonded way. We are looking at a series of large projects in the pipeline. And for example, just to name a few, you may recall from the Capitol Plan, there's roof and windows at the high school. The superintendent's informed us that the tri-generation facility at the high school is at the end of its useful life. The Coastal Vulnerability Working Group has spent some time and still continues to analyze the vulnerability of the wastewater treatment plant. Given its location and given how important it is and given the size of it, that can be a considerable expense. We are also looking at a renovation to the police station, which could be significant as well. We know that when opportunities come up to purchase open space, that might be an opportunity as well. I think folks that are active in the open space community probably are aware that there is a fairly substantial inventory of properties that may be coming on the market. It doesn't mean necessarily that we would buy them, but we might, and so there is some optionality there as well. Other things that we are looking at is now that interest rates are higher. The question is, do we allocate pension assets differently, and do we allocate a higher percentage to fixed income? And those fixed income investments would be earning more over the long run than what we typically earn on the fund balance, and they would certainly be more than the rates that we would be paying if we had borrowed. Members of this body may recall that when the town borrows, they borrow at tax-exempt rates. Because of the tax status of those bonds, the rates are lower than would be a bond issued in a private sector, which are typically the bonds that would be owned in a pension fund. So, and also, we have a revalue in 2026. There are a lot of projects in the pipeline, and you know, I think the fund balance right now is how we look at those projects. Some projects, it might make sense to pay cash based on the Inflation Reduction Act. So, so, Mark, I think the best way to kind of look at all this is probably with a model that's probably more familiar to your area, and that is the private sector. And you know, when folks in a private sector companies, one of the things that they typically look at is, now, how do we allocate capital? And you know, our fund balance would be considered capital. So how do we allocate that in a way that fits our best estimate of what current conditions are and what our best estimate is of, you know, the return on the investment? I mean, obviously, we don't know what pension returns are going to be in the future. We do know what the actuarial benefit is of putting additional money into the pension at 6.5%. And you know, there's not necessarily universal agreement on how to allocate capital, I believe. And you know, some folks would make the argument to put more money in the coastal resiliency fund, as an example. So I mean, there's, you know, and that's been an initiative that's come up in committee meetings, even when it comes to reallocating capital balances. So I think the takeaway, Mark, is that we still could use the reserve to fund this, but right now, we are basically looking at having the option of borrowing if we need to. And Peter Black made the point, which I probably should have underscored in my response at the committee, and that is that typically, you know, a bond issue is a combination of multiple projects. So we're not going out and incurring costs for a million dollar or a million one bond issue. This would be part of other projects in which we've authorized debt and based on what our best estimate of cash flow is. You know, like I said, we have a lot of projects in the pipeline. If Alex Caluzzi were on the call, he would be talking about the importance of the Walsh project, not the, not the school project itself, but the athletic facility there and what's involved there as well. So we have a lot of challenges and we have assets. And so how we deploy those assets or capital to meet those challenges remains to be seen over the next couple of years. It's something I'm working on currently. It's something I discuss regularly with the Chairman of the Board of Finance and, of course, the First Selectman. So all these things are really in play, Mark. So right now, our best approach is to try to be as flexible as we can, and this resolution provides us, as does the other item on the agenda, that level of flexibility.
Okay, Representative Flanagan here, thank you. Jim Finch, any comments from members of the RTM?
Yes, this is Representative Rickyo. Thank you, Jim, for that explanation. What parameters then do we use as a town to either borrow money or dip into our rainy day fund? I'm just, you know, I'm just curious, you know, when, you know, I didn't, I'm trying to remember, did we use the rainy day fund to finance the renovations of the animal shelter renovation? I just don't remember. Can you answer that for me?
Yeah, I can. There's really two questions. Is one is, you're asking if there is a hard and fast threshold that determines what's bonded and what's pay-as-you-go, I think was the first question. And the second one was, you know, how much of the fund balance did we use for the animal shelter? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the animal shelter, my recollection is that we took $650,000 from fund balance, and that was in response to the bits that came back well in excess of what the appropriation was. And I believe we also used $100,000 from the fund balance in the animal shelter fund. So that's my recollection on that. And it was used, again, to limit the amount of debt we would have to issue. And then the second thing is, is there a hard and fast number in terms of what gets bonded and what doesn't? The short answer is no, but generally, representations that we've made, I know in past rating agency presentations, is that typically, you know, projects over a million dollars, we would ask for a bond authorization. Another example would, where we financed stuff out of fund balance, the WRF, where we added some money to, or the town dock, where we added some money to that project. Most recently, a project which got a lot of discussion was the $650,000 for the security system at the, for the school system. Those items were, were taken out of fund balance. So, and again, we do a lot of, as you know, from the capital fund, we do a lot of projects that are on a pay-as-you-go basis, which actually, in many communities, those projects would be bonded. You know, I'm somewhat familiar with some area towns and what they bond for, and because they don't have a large pay-as-you-go capital plan. So hopefully, that answers your question.
Yes, it does. What has a bigger, what has a bigger impact on the citizen's tax bill? Is it bonding or borrowing money, or is it pay-as-you-go and taking some money out? And a follow-up question, why couldn't we take $500,000 of cash and bond the other $500,000? So the first question is, what has a bigger impact on the tax obligation of our citizens? Bonding or taking the money out of our rainy day fund?
Well, I'm going to try to put it in a citizen's perspective as well as the finance director's perspective. The, a citizen, I think, the best way I might explain it to is, is maybe how they run their own household, right?
Yeah.
So generally speaking, you would want a certain amount of dollars available for emergencies, you know, that's one of the tenants of personal finance. That's also true of a town. Now, admittedly, Branford's reserves are in excess of what, you know, an appropriate analogy for a citizen's reserve fund, but assuming a citizen does have a healthy reserve fund, I think those decisions really get made on a day-to-day basis for what is deemed to be the benefit of the household. If one was nearing retirement, for example, they might be more concerned with paying down debts than they would be taking on new debts. If one was, had a college bill to fund in the next year or two, their reserves, while big compared to the average American household, may not be sufficient to cover the college bill. I think, I think in terms of the town, you know, one of the things that you look at, again, I think comes down to allocating capital. It's, okay, so do we, one, you know, do certain things pay as you go? Now, a lot of the things that we do pay as you go, Mark, typically have shorter lives. For example, police cars, some of the software, and some of the other things that we've done. Things that are of a larger nature, that you would, you know, it would be prohibitive. And I think the question is, well, what is that level? I think we would all agree that, you know, the I think we would all agree that, you know, the Walsh project was not going to be done any other way than bonding. And and not only does that make sense financially, it makes sense from an intergenerational equity. So, in other words, the citizens that are getting the benefit of the Walsh renovation are going to exist for easily two generations. So, to fund that over two generations in a 20-year bond makes a lot of sense. Now, you know, there are other, there are other times where it's prohibited to bond. If you want to make a pay down into a pension fund, the laws regarding pension obligation bonds are somewhat restrictive and prohibitive, I feel, for the town of Branford. Taking that money out of fund balance and getting a benefit on the return on asset assumption of six and a half percent, discounting those liabilities at six and a half percent, I I think makes makes a lot of sense if, you know, if, as opposed to using that not to bond at 4%. And so, you know, there's always a lot of things in 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 play, Mark. And, you know, I think where it kind of gets into that gray area, and I think Linda has touched on this, too, you know, trying to come up with a hard and fast rule and and amount, is when you're in that kind of million dollar range where, you know, you can kind of go either way with this stuff. And and there is no, no, nothing that prevents us. As I said, we we could at some point pay all of this if we choose to out of fund balance. And so, to answer your other question, well, if we could pay all of it out of fund balance, we could pay half of it out of fund balance. You know, these decisions typically get made by myself, the administration, and and the Board of Finance. And, yeah, while we may not be perfect, I think that, you know, our debt plan is is one of the stronger criteria that the rating agencies use when they evaluate the town's credit. And they also look at fund balances as well. So, so we can point to some external validation as it relates to our approach. And that external validation, obviously, is not only important to us, but it's important to the bond buying community and who rely on those evaluations and making their own investment decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. Anyone else in the RTM wishing to discuss this? Hearing none? Anybody from the public here wishing to speak to this? I don't believe I see anybody, but. Okay, this will be a roll call vote. A yes vote is in favor of this bonding resolution, and no vote, you're against. The clerk will now call the roll call on item two.
Okay. Item number two. Yes, you're in favor? No, you're opposed. Alphon?
Yes.
Amore? Representative Amore, I think you're muted.
So sorry, yes.
Thank you. Anderson?
Anderson says yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Black?
Representative Black, yes.
Bonnberger?
Representative Bonnberger is a yes.
Brooks?
Representative Brooks, yes.
Conklin?
Representative Conklin is a yes.
Erlanger?
Representative Erlanger votes yes.
Everson?
Representative Everson votes yes.
Greenberg?
Greenberg is a yes.
Healy?
Representative Healy votes yes.
Henshaw?
Representative Henshaw, I believe you're muted.
Henshaw, yes.
Thank you. Ingraham?
Representative Ingraham, yes.
Representative Leach is a yes. Representative Mareska?
Representative Mareska votes yes.
Thank you. Representative Ricchio?
Representative Ricchio's vote is a no, and I'm still waiting for an apology from Representative Healy.
Representative Schresta?
Representative Schresta votes yes.
Sires?
Yes.
To Hill?
Representative To Hill votes yes.
Bergeram?
Bergeram, yes.
Okay, we have 21 yes and one no.
Okay, Representative Flanagan here, the resolution passes. Moving on to item three. To receive communications with respect to and to consider act upon a resolution entitled, Resolution Authorizing an Appropriation of $2,250,000 for the Supply Pond Bridge Project and the financing of the said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $2,250,000. Therefore, the full text of the resolution is on file, open to the public inspection in the office of the town clerk. Representative Healy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, this is something we also just heard just an hour ago tonight. We heard from Town Engineer John on this. This is subjected to the 50-50 grant approval. It passed through the committee five to zero. I'd first like to make a motion that we waive the full reading of the resolution.
Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Black. I'll second the motion to waive the full reading of the resolution.
Okay, the motion on the floor has been seconded to waive the full reading of the resolution. This will be, again, will be a roll call vote. Yes is in favor of waiving the complete reading, and no is is against.
Okay. This is to waive the reading of the resolution for item number three. Alphon?
Representative Alphon, yes.
Amore?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Black?
Representative Black votes yes.
Bonnberger?
Representative Bonnberger, yes.
Brooks?
Brooks, yes.
Conklin?
Representative Conklin votes yes.
Erlanger?
Representative Erlanger votes yes.
Everson?
Representative Everson votes yes.
Greenberg? Representative?
Representative Greenberg, yes.
Thank you. Healy?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Henshaw, yes.
Hesse?
Hesse, yes.
Ingraham?
Representative Ingraham, yes.
Leach is yes. Mareska?
Representative Mareska, yes.
Ricchio?
Representative Ricchio votes no.
Schresta?
Representative Schresta, yes.
Sires?
Representative Sires, yes.
To Hill?
Representative To Hill voting yes.
Bergeram?
Bergeram votes yes.
Okay, we have 21 yes, one no.
Okay, the motion passes to waive the complete reading of the resolution. Representative Healy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, again, this just passed through a committee. It's going to be an extensive project. Most everyone here is familiar with the bridge and how it's been deteriorating over the years. It's going to be two lanes with pedestrian walk on either side, as well as the possibility, it's still in design phase for area for fishing even. So, again, we have a 50-50 grant that's coming in through this, passed five to zero, and it put its passage in the form of a motion here this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay, Representative Flanagan, a motion to approve this resolution. Is there any discussion from members of the RTM?
Representative Brooks?
Representative Brooks, go ahead.
It's maybe, maybe it is, I don't know. Representative Healy said this is a 50-50 project. Is our vote, and I, I mean, I don't have a preference, I just, for information reasons, is this a vote stating that if we don't get the grant? Because you did, Representative Healy, said this pending approval of the grant. If we don't get the grant, then this will go away? So, this is, this is a vote pending approval of the grant? Or we don't have approval, but we'll still going to fund the project with the hopes of getting the grant?
Representative Healy, go ahead.
Thank you. Representative Healy here. Representative Brooks, no, we have the grant, but it's still in design phase. So, we'd still be waiting on total costs coming in. And again, this is just, like Mr. Finch said earlier, allowing us that we set the money aside, that at least can start some of this project for the design phase. The numbers will come before us as we start to hear more details on it.
Thank you, Representative Healy. I just heard you say pending the grant, but that's fine, so we're good.
This is Representative Henshaw.
Representative Henshaw, go ahead.
Yes, just just one follow up question. If it's a 50-50 grant, are we in fact bonding the full amount or and only going to be expending half? Or are we bonding half the amount of the actual project?
Representative Healy?
No, I believe we're bonding the full amount, but this, as Mr. Finch said earlier, we're not going to just be bonding this one component. We'll also be bonding the one that we just okayed, the 1.1. It may go into other bonds. When Jim Finch does bonds, he tends to blend them together so we get better rates, and then we use the funds accordingly.
Representative Flanagan, it's Representative Ingraham.
Yeah.
Representative Ingraham?
It's Representative Ingraham, but just a correction there, at least. What I heard out of the other meeting is that we will be bonding for half, but our responsibility is for the full 2.2, so we have to appropriate the the full amount. But when it goes out the bonding, they'll maybe be doing the half. Or or whatever, if it comes back and there's some escalating costs or something, it might be a little more than the 1.125. I think Jim and John Heffernan are still on, so if they want to.
Yeah, we we are.
Yeah, there you go. And your hand is up, so.
Yeah, that, okay, yeah, I wasn't raising that hand. I think, actually, the hand up, I think, is Jamie's, like, well, where'd it go? I thought it was Jamie's. But anyway, okay, well, I'll go first then. Yes, yeah, I think I think, Ray, that was a faithful representation. Basically, our bonding, I'm sorry, the authorization is for the full appropriation. Our plan is to bond for the non-grant portion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Selectman Cosgrove have his hand up? Did I read that?
No, it was, Jim stepped in and clarified it. I was just.
Anyone else in the RTM wishing to speak to this item?
Yes, yes, I would like to add something, Mr. Moderator, please.
Go ahead, Representative To Hill?
Yes, I just wanted to inform the people that could not make ways and means earlier tonight. It was, it was questioned, it was discussed. Supposing if the estimate comes in and it's actually greater than, you know, than the amount that's been planned on? And the answer, I believe, from Town Engineer Heffernan was that the state DOT, they will, they will take a supplemental, you know, for the extra cost, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Representative To Hill. Anybody else in the RTM wishes to speak to this? Okay, anybody from the public? Okay, hearing none? This will be a roll call vote. A yes is in favor. Mr. Finch, yes?
Yeah, Dennis, it's Jim Finch, Finance Director. I just want to, just want to clarify something, because, you know, John mentioned the Harbor Street culvert. If, if, for example, the cost worth, you know, $3 million, to use a round number, you know, what John, what I believe John said, and I'd encourage him to correct this if it's not correct, is that, you know, there may be an opportunity for the state to up its 50% for a million and a half. But we would also, at that point, because our authority to spend is is only the $2,250, we would then have to go back and amend this authorization to include the revised amount before we could sign any contracts for construction.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Finch. Again, any comments, any discussion from members of the RTM?
Yeah, this is Representative Ricchio. So, we don't really know the full cost of this project yet. Is that what I understand?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a fair, Jim Finch, Finance Director, I think it's like any project that you're you're basically appropriating based on a plan. You you will not know the full cost until, one, you get bids back. Two, even when you get bids back, you know, you may experience conditions, you know. Let's say you're working on a tank, and then you discover there's a leak and there's bad soil. You may find that you have to dig deeper for your footings if you're building a structure. So, there are always unknowns that that can occur in a project. And, and, you know, we would basically need to adjust when that happens. Since this is your last meeting, Mark, I'll leave you with with my, with a with a one liner. And that is, in this case, we cross that bridge when we come to it.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. Anyone else in the RTM? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. A yes vote, and you're in favor, and a no vote, you're against. The clerk will call the roll call on this.
Okay. Item number three. In favor, yes. Opposed, no. Alphon?
Representative Alphon, yes.
Amore?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Black?
Representative Black, yes.
Bonnberger?
Representative Bonnberger, yes.
Brooks?
Yeah, Brooks, yes.
Conklin?
Representative Conklin, yes.
Erlanger?
Representative Erlanger, yes.
Everson?
Representative Everson, yes.
Healy? Sorry, Greenberg? Representative Greenberg?
Representative Greenberg, yes.
Thank you. Healy?
Representative Healy, yes.
Henshaw?
Henshaw, yes.
Hesse?
Hesse, yes.
Ingraham?
Representative Ingraham, yes.
Leach is yes. Mareska?
Representative Mareska, yes.
Ricchio?
Representative Ricchio votes yes, and I'm still waiting for an apology from Representative Healy.
Cold day in hell.
All right, let's let's continue the meeting here.
Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful response, Representative Healy.
Representative Schresta?
Representative Schresta, yes.
Thank you. Sires?
Representative Sires, yes.
Stupanic? Sorry, he's absent. To Hill?
Representative To Hill voting yes.
And Bergeram?
Bergeram votes yes.
Okay, it's unanimous, 22 yes.
Okay, thank you. The resolution passes. Moving on to item four, adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Representative Amore?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.